Hello everyone, welcome to this inaugural Halo Town Hall meeting. My name is Matt Green, I'm joined by my colleague Rishi. We've also got Ted on the line who's part of the programme as well, WFA. So, this is a new format for us, this town hall format. And it's all about the Halo programme. You've heard us talk about this programme on numerous occasions, well, many of you have. What we wanted to do today is provide a forum to talk to you all, and many of you are WFA members. Not all of you, some of you are part of the industry, some of you are existing Halo stakeholders, and some of you are industry partners. We wanted to provide a forum to talk to all of you about the progress that is being made on the programme. So, what is the programme, you asked? What is Halo? Well, for those that aren't familiar, we describe it as we're all about democratising cross-media measurement here. And this Halo programme is the industry's only advertiser-driven, global, open-source and neutral CMM software framework. A really powerful framework. It's powered locally owned, industry-wide and adaptable solutions which enable better marketing. So the Halo framework, Halo is two things. It is both this open-source framework, it's a technology set, but it's also a coalition, the coalition of the willing. All these companies on the right, and more, I think, actually, I'm not sure if it's up to date. All of these companies and more are involved in this powerful programme, which is designed to produce global assets which can be utilised by local markets in support of, as I say, the most powerful cross-media measurement approaches going. So that's what Halo is, and we wanted, as I said, we wanted to provide a space to talk to the industry about the exciting progress that is being made, both here in the centre and the development of this framework, but also where the real action is, is on the local markets, the exciting local programmes who are taking this framework, deploying it in their markets and building real-life production solutions. And we'll hear shortly about the exciting progress being made in the UK and the US, where the ISBA guys or Origin guys are busy building their solution, and the same in the US under the ANA. So, very exciting progress. We want to do this by monthly basis, so every other month you can register for the event. You can find it on the WFA site, navigate to the events page and you'll find it, or just the picture of this QR code and it will take you there. Get that in your diary and each and every other month we'll have exciting updates for you. What we wanted to talk to you today was the outcomes, the outputs from our recent community summit. Yes, we met in New York kindly hosted by Meta just a month ago, less. A really successful summit, about ninety people, I don't think everyone's on screen here, but about ninety people, a really interesting cross-section across advertisers, advertiser associations, media companies, agencies and many others besides. So, really reflective of the programme itself and the composition of the programme. So, we wanted to provide an opportunity to talk to you all about what was covered in that summit, the major themes and the major outcomes. So, first of all, I'm gonna show a video, but before I do, just a quick summary of what we intended to do from that event. So there were three core themes. We wanted to understand, we wanted to identify ways to make it easier to get data into these nascent systems. And we wanted to address the challenges of getting the data out the other end, advertisers who are users of the system and agencies too. So getting it in, getting it out, key issues, and it seems straightforward, but it's not. So there are some blockers there which we need to address. So, two major focus areas there. In addition, we were looking at efficiency communications and go-to-market issues. And of course, we were hearing about the exciting progress being made by ISBA and ANA with their pilots, which are both based on the Halo framework. So, those were the themes, but there was also a broader objective for that summit. The intention was to highlight to a diverse community the exciting progress that is being made with the Halo technology, because we believe that this is going to be very much the future of cross-media measurement. And we wanted to demonstrate that, we wanted everyone to see that this is a fully capable cross-media measurement solution. Well rehearsed today. Before I get to that video, I wanted to talk briefly about the advertiser point of view. And we have got some really key advertiser stakeholders involved in our programme. Artilin Kulkarni at Pepsi, Sarah Mansfield at Unilever, Kanishka Daz at P and G, and Z and Nestle. They were all there, and they were there to offer their excitement and enthusiasm for the programme. Even more than that, KD offers this really interesting view. He's saying, you know what, this is a challenging space, really challenging for so many reasons to deliver cross-media measurement. There might have been quicker ways to get to an outcome. I think he's right when he says we've taken a surer, steadier route, but where we've ended up where we are today, we are a very solid place because we have a very future-focused, very privacy-safe methodology. And that's testament to the collaboration, so I agree with KD when he says that. Sarah adds, you know what, we're excited about this, we're excited about how Unilever will be using this in the UK and the US and hopefully other markets beyond. And Z echoes those thoughts when he says, hey, you know what, I'm thinking about how I can actually use this data, how it can enrich the modelling capabilities and Nestle. So it's really, it's been quite theoretical for a while, but now it's great that advertisers are starting to see how they might actually be using this data in the not-too-distant future. Origin hopes to launch this year. So, it's becoming a reality. Z, I think I saw you joining the call. I wondered if you've got any thoughts you'd like to add there?
Hi everyone. Well, yeah, the first thought I had was the picture's supposed to convey excitement and I look miserable, so that wasn't the intent there at all. But, yeah, I think, you know, after some time, because this journey has been going on now for a few years. I think after this summit, I really felt like I was in a position to go back to some of my stakeholders in the organisation and say, look, we're getting to a place now where you're going to see some noticeable progress from your perspective as a day-to-day media practitioner. And that was really quite exciting to be able to talk about to the stakeholders, as well as, you know, the quote that you've said there about, yeah, how are we gonna leverage this data? Because, yeah, I think for anyone with a background in analytics and, you know, working in the media space, like, I think it really does open a number of possibilities which are very exciting for us.
Absolutely, thank you very much, Z. Yeah, very exciting indeed. But we're gonna spend the rest of the time providing a summary of what was covered and the outcomes from the summit. I've got some summary slides as well, just to put up some bullet points down. So we've now released eight code releases for Halo. So, and there's several more to follow, so we feel like we made exciting progress there. But what's been fascinating is to hear from both Origin and the ANA on the pilot progress that they're making. We'll talk shortly about where Origin and ANA are up to, but they are both in positions to ingest real data into their platforms. And indeed, Origin hopes to launch later this year following beta trials, which they're going into before too long. That will be a huge moment for the programme, of course. Now, as I described earlier on, there are some challenges of getting data in and getting data out of the system. So we talked a lot in the summit about how to find some solutions for those problems, and we have some ideas for data inputs, there are various options, right? We talked about EDP, event data provider aggregators, we talked about open-source turnkey EDP solutions, and we even talked about vid-on-device labelling and SDK. Very technical, but all really interesting ideas, which I think we should be looking at how we can push against all three of those different devices. We talked about data outputs, user interfaces, APIs, but there are challenges before that phase, just in terms of the confusion with account IDs, campaign nomenclature, especially when you think about digital and TV. The way campaigns are labelled is not necessarily consistent, and that provides real challenges for how you provide cross-media reach and frequency when the nomenclature, the taxonomy is diverse. So, we need to have work streams on how we address that. Okay, we also talked more of a sort of business lens in the summit. We looked at how we can collaborate better between the pilot markets and hopefully the other markets when they might enter the programme. We probably need a stronger governance approach, and we're reviewing what the steering committee should look like within the Halo programme. So that's something we're looking at very much. We discussed various stakeholders, and we discussed how we need a stronger communication plan. And part of that is through doing sessions like this town hall, but we want to help stakeholders, including those in regulatory and political fields, help them understand the value of this technology and how it is privacy by design and how powerful that is. Lastly, we heard from the Association of Canadian Advertisers. The Canadians are in a really exciting position to be, as they describe, a fast-follower market, and they want to use Halo as the foundations for what their CMM ambitions are. So that's really exciting to hear, for sure. And the Canadians are not alone, the Belgians were with us, the Union, the UBI, the Union of Belgian Advertisers. And there are many other markets who are interested in doing this. So, while our focus today is on enabling the two pilots, we're really excited to see how other markets can be fast-followers as the Canadians describe themselves. So that's a summary of the content covered. Now we're gonna run through a few highlights and we'll bring in some speakers as we go. So the summit kicked off by hearing from our friends at Origin and our friends at ANA. And this is Tom George on screen here, who I don't think can make the call today. But as you may know, Tom is the CEO of the Origin programme. And Tom was describing how the programme's grown in the UK. And they've got more than fifty funding stakeholders now, many, many advertisers who are part of the programme. And Tom described how they've raised over fifty million over the three or four years that Origin has been in operation, which is money that is needed to build out the platform from the open-source base. And indeed, to stand up a new single-source panel, which they're working with Kantor. So that takes a lot of money. But as Tom describes, the funding division, if you like, between buy-side and sell-side has evolved. And I can't remember exactly what the numbers were, I'm sure the Kaiser Origin will tell us shortly, but the share that is contributed to Origin from the advertiser buy-side is increasing, which reflects the ongoing need and interest in this technology from the advertiser side, which is what we've always known and which we've heard from our advertiser panel as well. So that was great to hear. Then we heard from Martin, we've got Martin on screen. So rather than me describing what Martin said, I'm gonna invite Martin to talk a little bit about what he said. And maybe, Martin, you can also offer us some reflections about the summit in general.
Yeah, sure, thanks, Matt. And just to, before I dig in, I'll just refer to the funding model that you just mentioned. So, historically, we've looked to the platforms to be the majority funders of Origin. They funded in excess of ninety percent, or at least media owners have funded in excess of ninety percent of the development funds whilst we've been building out the service. When we flip to being a live service, the commercial model will flip with that, and kind of end-users will pay to access the data, so advertisers will be paying to access the data. This year will be a transition from one model to another as we look to launch towards the end of the year. So this year, about twenty-three, twenty-four percent of programme funding will come from the buy-side, which is great, historically it's been less than ten percent each year. But in life, it'll flip and be around sixty, seventy percent from the buy-side. So, if anybody wants to know any more about the funding model, just kind of ask away, or we can follow up later with kind of the work that we've done on that to date. In terms of the session itself, I think we just gave the delegates a sense of the progress we've made with Origin. As many of you will know, that the service is underpinned by a panel. We've been appointing, working with Kantor to build out that panel, and that's now about seventy-five percent complete and will be fully completed later this spring. And we work with Accenture to build out the technology platform that both carries the computation and also kind of creates the UI that end-users will log into to kind of commission a measurement. And that platform is now ready for our beta trial, which will start, probably start onboarding end-users in the next month or so. So, the beta trial, to kind of cut a long story short, is where end-users will be using the platform at scale. There'll be more than thirty advertisers using it. And as part of this trial, they'll have access to real-life campaign data and they'll be able to see, you know, cross-media measurements for their own campaign inventory for the first time. So that's when Origin will kind of come to life and finally move from being a notion that kind of engendered a lot of support from across the industry to being something that's tangible and people can kind of see real-life measurements kind of in the flesh. So we're really excited about that, I think there's tangible excitement in the UK marketplace for it as well. And so really, we kind of used that session to update the group of where we've got to and where we're headed as part of the transition to launch.
Thank you, Martin. We've now got another slide, which is Chloe's piece. But Martin, maybe you wanna stay on and then tell us a little bit about this. What we're looking at clearly is the roadmap and how you're using the Halo features amongst the Origin features. Maybe it's worth just expanding a bit on this.
Well, I could do, but Chloe's here, so.
Sorry. I was hiding behind, not turning my camera on, but apologies, the office internet isn't very strong today. So if this isn't great, let me know and I'll stop talking. Okay, great. So yes, presented the Origin roadmap, which you can see on screen here. Within this, we underpinned the Halo features, which are the kind of dark pink features. Because as you can see from my nicely placed quote there, thanks Matt or Rishi, I don't know which one of you put that there, but we're supported heavily by Halo in terms of, we will work with the Halo teams very closely to push out the latest Halo code that we will use within our feature and build development. So, a good example is they will be building a report scheduling capability. So they'll be providing data availability as a feature, and we will build that into a wider feature that we will deliver to the market called report scheduling in Q3. That's an example of kind of how we would work together and prioritise our respective backlogs. So, yes, we have an aggressive year ahead of us in terms of feature build. We've got lots to do, but we are also supported by the Halo team, and we kind of work closely with them in terms of, yes, feature development build, bug triage, prioritisation. And that will effectively all bake nicely into our Origin platform, which will be the thing that the end-user will see ultimately. Yes, I think that's everything.
Brilliant, yeah, thank you very much, Chloe, thank you very much, Martin. We also heard from Jackson, Jackson Basely, who can't be with us today unfortunately. Jackson taught us about the position that the ANA is up to. They are also making great progress, they are also building out the solution with their partners, and as I understand it, also beginning the work of putting in place panel, single-source panel. But they've been able to use real campaign data to generate real reports, so also in a really exciting position. So, 2024 is gonna be a fantastic year, both pilots reaching either alpha or beta testing. And we hope to see Origin launch in Q4, I think you said, didn't you, Martin and Chloe? Which would be a really big moment for the collective programmes. Okay, Ted, I'm gonna invite you to come on now, because what we also described in the summit was the, as I said earlier on, we've delivered eight Halo code releases and counting so far. Here are some of the 2023 deliverables, thankfully multi-cloud support, NPC research, improved reporting, improved API reporting and other areas. In 2024, we've got, while these four boxes don't look particularly exciting, actually it's a really powerful roadmap that we have for 2024, isn't it, Ted?
Absolutely, thank you, thank you, Matt, for that initial, you know, introduction. But yes, 2024 is very exciting, especially, you know, as you heard from Chloe as well, that, you know, our roadmap, the Halo roadmap is also governed and influenced by the requirement of the local markets. So we are looking at Origin and the ANA's requirements right now. We're gonna make sure that we support them and make sure the roadmap items that we are working on, Halo as a team we are working on, is being used in the couple of quarters thereafter. And as we progress into 2024, our focus is, you know, of course, fit and finish, as you see that. What is fit and finish? Fit and finish is basically creating features and make sure that Halo is fit for a local market, and also make sure that, you know, the quality and performance of the features are increasing or also, you know, improving. That's basically what fit and finish is all about. And as we progress into 2024, we will also focus on other areas like scaling adoption, MTC performance. That's another area that, you know, we want to deliver, thereby providing a better, faster, cheaper Halo, because that's what, you know, you heard, that we want to get Halo to towards. Now, what is scaling adoption? Next slide, please. Yeah, so we'll talk about some of the highlights, and you've probably seen this particular slide that Stephen had, you know, projected and talked about. We've heard, we heard from the local markets, we got the feedback, and we heard the challenges of the onboarding of EDPs, right? You probably have heard this, this is a hot topic of discussion at the summit as well. The EDP onboarding, we've heard it's tedious, time-consuming. So, you know, making sure that we take that opportunity and tackle it now, it was very critical for us. You know, there has been areas where, you know, a maturity model takes a longer time to, you know, mature. So we wanna make sure that, you know, we improve on what we have built, and we keep on doing this by rethinking our strategies and implementing those, you know, new and exciting features. Next slide. Again, you know, to tackle this now, there is no one tool fits all EDP type of a solution. We feel that, you know, depending on which domain that EDP is in, maybe it's a large publisher, maybe they're a smaller publisher, it's a DSP, something like that. So depending on where an EDP is, we feel there are different solutions that can be, you know, implemented. And again, these are our thought processes, these are our ideas right now. We're working on towards, like, you know, making them a reality as we move forward in this year. So three possible solutions that were, you know, presented. One of them was EDP aggregator, the other one turnkey EDP and vid-on-device, as you heard, Matt also mentioned in the earlier slides. Next slide, I would like to talk each one of this, next slide, please. So EDP aggregator, this particular, yeah, thank you. This particular, you know, solution is in, an EDP aggregator is a new entity. That's what we think, an EDP aggregator is probably a measurement company, a trusted entity with experience in measurement. So we anticipate this entity would set up the infrastructure and, you know, maybe reuse some code that has been, you know, already available, that has been available in our Halo, you know, domain. So essentially, we make it easier for the smaller publishers to onboard themselves. The EDP aggregator will take on the onus of maintaining the infrastructure while the publishers just have to bring their, you know, their logs in. So this is one solution that we think we will tread on in this year. And oh, by the way, we could also invite DSPs as well as SSPs, as you see here, with a proposal that they could potentially be an EDP aggregator. So that's in the works right now. For the turnkey EDP, now this is another area that we think we should be looking at. What is a turnkey EDP? It's more of an open-source kind of a code, which a larger EDP, when they come in, they probably start with a checklist or maybe a guide, you know, that we present, an EDP onboarding guide, as we call it. So these are some of the solutions that we think that we, right now, you know, we right now want to take a look at and work upon. You know, the latest EDP that we are working on, working with right now, they have promised to give us some feedback. So this feedback that comes from the new EDPs that are onboarding is very critical for us, right? That will actually decide on which way we are going as we build, you know, this open source. Now, the other option would be that Halo engineers would also build this open-source EDP, right? But we, of course, you know, we are looking at all our resources right now. And most of our resources, in fact, almost hundred percent of our resources are at capacity right now and focusing completely on the Origin roadmap and the ANA initiative roadmaps and campaign reports. So those requirements are totally staffed right now, we are short of staff, if I may put it that way. But again, you know, none of the roadmap items are actually, you know, set in stone, things can change as we progress. And then we would also like to talk to you, if you want to be part of this particular exciting journey, maybe, you know, give your inputs, maybe give your resources to work with us. So we're definitely looking at that option as well. And the third and final solution that we saw, that we feel that, you know, is required to onboard as many, you know, properties to measure, is the vid-on-device. So we continue to scope on that, we have our partners, IB Tech Labs, that we're talking with right now. And this is exciting too, because now we are coming together with another entity who is equally focused on the same principles and on the same target, or, you know, target that, you know, hey, Halo is a great programme, we want to bring in more and more properties to measure in this particular solution as well. That being said, I mean, Remendo or Stephen, do you have any kind of comments on this? Maybe Stephen? I don't know if Stephen's here. Probably not.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, yeah, he's unable to hear, no problem, no problem. But again, I mean, yeah.
Thanks, Ted.
Yeah, no problem, go ahead, Matt, yeah.
That's great, thank you very much indeed, Ted. Okay, so that's a great look at the challenges and the solutions for how we can better integrate partners into the solutions. Now, I'm gonna hand over to my colleague, Rishi, who's gonna talk about end-user enablement. Rishi?
So as so as Matt had mentioned at the start, data out or end-user enablement was the other key area that the team is keenly looking to explore in our product development roadmap. And we are starting to have great participation and engagement from agencies with the programme. We have OMD, GroupM, Publicis and OIT are very, very keenly involved in what we're doing. We had a really good panel discussion. We had a really good panel discussion where we got to hear firsthand from practitioners from agencies. And it's clear that Halo can solve some of the key challenges the industry currently faces, like the need for trusted and unbiased source of cross-media data, that there's, that has a capacity to provide light-to-light comparison across channels, and also allows deep insights into audiences and customer segments. And all of these can be well-serviced by Halo and the market instances like Origin in the UK and ANA in the US. This will allow more opportunities for practitioners to, one, keep the consumer experience's privacy expectation at the forefront and centre. It will also reduce the time and energy that's being spent today by agencies to bring in the best possible data into the planning systems. I think Halo will allow us to have that really good quality data available at all times, and also allow more time for agencies and practitioners to really focus on creating better planning solutions and hopefully processes that enable them to differentiate across each other. And as we go ahead, the expectation would be to develop full feature planning capabilities and potentially move closer to addressing what KD had mentioned, you know, outcome-related questions. Addressing those would be something that I think will come next as we progress on this. Now, we discussed several challenges around onboarding for advertisers. And like Matt had mentioned, one of the key challenges is that cross-platform account IDs that are currently not really in sync. And for us to be efficient in delivering insights continuously, we need to have, we need to ensure that there are systems in place that allow advertisers to bring together these campaign IDs. And it's a technical challenge that we need to build a mechanism to, one, authenticate advertisers to come into the system and then allow them to scale these integrations across accounts, across the platforms, and do analysis on this cross-channel data. across the platforms and do analysis on this cross-channel data. So there's a lot of research being currently done to identify, you know, what's the best possible solution? How do we solve this problem at scale? Uh, and there's, there's work stream that's working on it. And we we hope that, you know, we'll be able to develop scalable solutions that will allow us to do this as we have more and more advertisers coming onboard in the local instances. Um. The other key challenge, I think, uh, that was highlighted was the fact that there is no common nomenclature across camp, uh, across uh, across uh uh, across media uh channels when it comes to campaign IDs. And this will also impact how quickly we can bring together campaign data and evaluate and provide analysis. So uh, we highlighted the scope of the challenge during uh the summit and we also looked at several ways in which these can be addressed as an industry initiative. And it was great to s- to hear different uh, different opportunities where we can, we can solve this problem. IV Tech Lab was also present, uh, where where they provided, you know, cer- certain solutions uh that we're keenly looking at. So these are two key challenges we know we have to solve as we scale to more advertisers, more campaigns and more account IDs coming into the into the system. It's a good problem to have. It's a problem that we will be solving quite, quite quickly. Uh. The other key challenge, I think, uh, that has been highlighted uh and we have shared our initial thinking around at the summit was how are we looking at developing the API, API framework uh that we plan to build, that will allow agencies to integrate directly into the Halo instances in the market. So, you know, Origin and A and A. The APIs will help scale adoption quickly uh to advertise in agency systems alike. Uh, so it it provides, you know, quicker way to access data, granular data, allows agencies and and uh end users to develop analysis on top of that. We're already working on a requirement scoping research that will include the data delivery requirements, understanding campaign metadata structures, reporting dependencies, planning dependencies to ensure that we are building the API infra- infrastructure that is fit for purpose and enables a scalability requirements that are needed uh cross-agencies and end users. Um. The other key thing that we had uh discussed and what the Origin team shared was a UI framework that has been used uh by, by, by a lot of users uh that are currently within the ecosystem. This will allow a lot of users, uh, even those who are not integrating in, uh, integrating into the API ecosystem to access the data uh of these local instances. There's a lot of user research that's been done to develop the query framework that allows good and granular insights into the cross-media reach and frequency data. So there's a lot of work that's going on apart from the API development to how do you bring to life the data uh at scale for everyone. Uh. And in the same way, we are also looking at visualization options. Um. And this is sort of a sneak peek into potential opportunities. We still have to figure out what this will finally look like. Uh, but, you know, we want to ensure that all advertisers, even, you know, those who are not using APIs are able to access the data, analyze the data quickly, efficiently at campaign level, understand the insights, uh, and allow them to plan better. So this will allow all all users at all levels to access and utilize cross-media data quickly and efficiently. So there's a, there's a lot of opportunity uh and and we do see that uh uh, there, there are several of uh these opportunities that we'll be exploring across uh, across different timeframes uh within the roadmap. So uh, like Ted had mentioned, we, we want to ensure that we are building the most important things first. And as we go along, we'll be solving for all the different problems. Um. So just to summarize, um. Just to summarize, we know that there's great appetite among our end users and practitioners collaborate with the Halo solution. And we're looking uh to work more closely with them to understand requirements, ensure that we are we are developing systems that are fit for purpose. We've already started a practitioner advisory group that has been joined by a few of the agencies. And we, and we invite everyone who wants to join uh from an agency perspective to to reach out to us. Uh. We know that end user onboarding is critical. We want to work on creating awareness and education around the product and the solution itself. You know, it's a, it's quite a complex uh product and solution. We want to ensure that all people who are using it are very confident of why the solution is the right solution for them, why it's privacy safe, why it brings uh the best data into the media ecosystem. Uh. We want to solve the challenge of identifying cross-channel account IDs and campaign level data efficiently, make it more robust and 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 automated. Um. And also uh work on making the query process easier. So how do we use APIs and UIs and visualization tools that allow end users to quickly analyze the data and use them for planning uh purposes. So there, there's a lot of collaboration that we are hoping to achieve in in the next few months with the uh end user ecosystem. And we do believe that, you know, there are really good things installed for all of us as we build this product and this solution uh collectively. So I hand it back to uh to Matt.
Thanks, Rishi. Thanks, everyone. Um. Yeah, we haven't got much more. Um. By the way, I should have said at the beginning, if you have questions, feel free to voice them because there's not so many of us here. You can just come off mute and say if you want, or you can put in chat. It is up to you. Um. I've already spoken about the the Canadian situation. I'm not sure if we've got Judy here or Catherine or Neil from Numeris, the Canadian Joint Industry Committee, but the guys talked with enthusiasm about the coalition that they're building in Canada involving key publishers, broadcasters, agencies and more. Moving very well and the aspiration is to use the Halo framework as the foundations, the technology foundations for what they want to build in Canada. So really inspiring to to hear about what's, what's happening in Canada. As I mentioned, we also had a, a group from Belgium with us and um I know there are many other markets who are interested in doing this as well. That's um a really great, really great to see that, that appetite. I think when we get to twenty twenty-five on the back of a successful launch in the UK and the US, it's going to be fascinating to see how we can bring other markets into the program. That's our hope anyway. Um. As Rishi's already said, one other thing to to mention, the um, the summit was a great opportunity for us to um introduce this, these new advisory groups into the program. We've um been working through a process of identifying a set of individuals who can bring outside expertise into the program. The program is already composed of lots of expertise, I should say. Um. A rich mixture of data science, engineering, advertisers and others, but we did want to ensure that it was a well-rounded program and there were diverse voices. So these guys have been nominated by people in the program. People in the program said these are a set of individuals who would be valuable to take advice and perspectives from. So we invited this, um, our high tag, a number of these guys were with us in the summit and we're looking forward to working with this group to bring, as I say, more diverse expertise into the program. And indeed, in in addition, as Rishi's already mentioned, we also have a media practitioner advisory group set up, looking to work with this group and more from the agency side to help us understand how agencies, practitioners use and want to use tools such as the Halo system. So these groups are right at the beginning. We're looking forward to working with these, these individuals as we, as we seek to to progress the the program. Okay, so that's all we've got. The other content I alluded to at the beginning of this session, we don't have any slides for, but there was some really interesting conversations around governance of the program. Some really interesting conversations about how we can better collaborate and some really interesting conversations, how we can generate more communication materials, how we can interact and work with industry stakeholders, including those in political and regulatory arenas. So there's, there's work tracks going on there as well. Um. Just don't have any neat slides for it, but very productive two days in New York. Um. I think, hopefully, these slides demonstrate lots of energy, lots of dynamism, lots of interest, um. Uh, lots more to come, however. So this is, this town hall will be a regular feature. We'll do it every other month. Uh, as you saw at the beginning, you can register for that via the the W F A site. Navigate to the events page, you will find this, you can register. I should give you a diary I C S file. Um. Again, use a QR code if you prefer. Um. But we look forward to every other month coming to to talk to you about the progress that's being made. Um. Please feel free to share out with your colleagues because this is an industry program. It's, uh, we want it to be inclusive. It's not exclusive. We want to talk to the industry about the exciting progress that's being made. So hope to see you all next time. I hope this has been useful. That's all. So um, thank you very much for your time. And um, we look forward to working with you and talking to you again in the future. Have a wonderful afternoon, morning or evening, depending on where you are in the world. And um, see you next time.